Good morning, everybody. It's 10 o'clock. We're going to call this meeting into order. We do have forum with the exception of Commissioner Perez being absent. Commissioner Velazquez.
Present.
Commissioner Garza.
Present.
And Commissioner Penney and myself. Present. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. Would everybody please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating of its own.
Are there any public comments at this time?
No, it is standing by.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Agenda item number four, approval of minutes.
They're in the back.
I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Garza. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Velazquez. Please, everybody raise your right hand. Motion passes. And agenda item number five, discuss and take action to approve new vendors list.
The vendors have been reviewed, I recommend for approval.
I make a motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Velazquez. Please raise your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item number six, approval of claims as presented by Ms. Alanis, our county auditor.
Yes, the claims have been reviewed, I recommend for approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garza.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Velazquez. Please raise your right hand. Motion passes. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into agenda item number 13. If that's okay with the court? Okay, agenda item number 13. Consideration and possible action on tax abatement proposal for Falcon Lake Storage LLC. Ms. Rose Benavides will discuss on this matter.
Thank you, and good morning, commissioners. We do have this item, and we appreciate you taking it out of order. But as soon as we get some direction on this, we're going to step out for just a minute because this company is having a meeting today, and we needed to get an answer to them before 10:00, but we told them we couldn't do 10:00. So, having said that, good morning, everyone. We're here to bring before you a new project on the renewable energy. It is a battery storage facility for 160 megawatts. It is about close to 800 acres that it is taking a place in. As you can see in the map, it is in Las Lomas Road. There's multiple projects that we've been doing on the western part of the county. And right now, it is a $50 million project. Ideally, they expect to begin construction in early 2026. But in order for us to be able to pursue this project, we're here before the court to ask for a motion to authorize the Industrial Foundation to begin exploration and negotiations with the company.
I entertain a motion.
Where is Loma Blanca?
Loma Blanca. This project is between five to seven miles, más o menos, north on Loma Blanca Road.
Okay.
I entertain a motion so we can go ahead and allow Rose Benavides.
Excuse me, to start negotiations.
I'm sorry. I'll also say that they're looking at two other locations in the county that are in north of, north on 755 and some north on 2360.
Is it the same company that's going to make the batteries?
That is correct.
Any questions? I have a motion by Commissioner Garza. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Velazquez. Please raise your right hand. Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will be going back into our negotiations. She needs to start negotiating. More reports?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners. My report is in front of you. If you can follow me, please. Our total collections, current collections for May 2025 for Starr County entities only, it's $312,041 with 33 cents. Current collections for May 2024, there were $339,606 with 63 cents. There was a total collection of $27,000.
Bless you.
Bless you. $565 with 30 cents, less than last year. Our total delinquent collections for May 2025, just for Starr County, were $181,987 with 21 cents. Total collections, delinquent for May 2024, were $177,257 with 35 cents. There was a total delinquent collection of $4,729 with 86 cents, more than last year. As of May, my office has collected 95% of the projected current collections. Projected collections remaining are $958,317 with 82 cents. Also, we have collected 57% of the delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections remaining are $1,313,271 with 78 cents. Payments made to Starr County Motor Vehicle Department were $63,853 with 97 cents, just for Starr County. That concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners. My report's in front of you. I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. Our records management collected 6,368 copies, brought in 125590. Our records archive collected 6,092. Our marriage license is due to the state, was 1,150. And total due to the treasurer was $32,057.50. We had another good month. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Sosa.
Sheriff's Department.
Morning, Judge, commissioners. This is a report for the revenues for the month of May 2025. AWE Solutions at $1,500. Marshall Transport Services, $9,206. Medical Services, $1,164. Housing of inmates, federal inmates, $164,430. And Hidal County, $30,256 for a total revenue of $206,556. The count for June 2nd was 74 federal inmates, 10 Hidal county inmates, and 81 Starr County inmates for a total housing, $165. The average count was 64 federal, 16 Hidal county inmates. We're showing the difference between this time last year, in May 2024 to 2025. It was $223,000 less than the same time last year. At this time, we're 58.23% collected, the projected revenue, $4.7 million.
Just to comment, you know, the impact that, I guess, the jail is having has to do a lot with the immigration numbers, I guess.
That's correct.
That we're not getting prisoners from, that we were getting before from the feds in Hidal County. However, Mr. Molina and the sheriff have talked to me that they're trying to get some prisoners from Cameron County or some inmates from Cameron County. Hopefully, that goes through. If not, and this trend continues, we're going to end up with about a $500,000 deficit from what I had projected. We're still okay. You know, we're still about $500,000 more than is projected. But that will be eaten up in the next two or three months if things don't improve. Just to let you all know where we're at. Thank you, Jean. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
International Bridge.
Good morning. This is the report for May 2025. The total revenue from traffic is $282,610, and we show an increase of $43,672 with 50 cents for the month of May 2024 compared to the month of May 2025. And we also show an increase of $20,795 with 50 cents. That's on collections for the month of May 2025 compared to the month of April 2025. We don't have currency exchange for this month, so the grand total collections for May is $282,610.
Well, the bridge is doing extremely well.
Yes.
So, that's good. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Treasurer, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge and commissioners. This is my report for the month of May 2025. Please follow along with me. The ending balance for the general fund is at $7,021,591 with 14 cents. The road and bridge, it's at $1,334,926 with 60 cents. The enterprise funds, the ending balance is at $2,468,907 with 94 cents. The drainage district, the ending balance is at $4,134,997.72. The INS funds, they are at $2,765,566 with 30 cents, which brings the grand total ending balance of all funds to $17,725,989 with 70 cents. That is my report. Are there any questions, please?
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Sosa.
Thank you.
Auditor.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners. I have the monthly report for May 31st, 2025. Okay, I'll start on page one. For the cash summary for the month ending the 31st of May, I have a general fund available cash balance, $6,825,214. Road and bridge fund had available balance of $1,264,273. Our payroll clearing account ended with $403,567. Moving on to page two, budget summary for general fund. Year-to-date revenues collected, $17,925,650. I'll move on to the budget summary for expenditures.
Before you go on past page two.
Yes, sir.
You know, and I know I'm bringing this up, seems like every report, but on the wind companies.
Yes.
It still comes out zero. If I understand correctly, it's because they're a year behind or something like that.
They're a year, a couple of months delayed. Our fiscal year ends in September. They kind of send payments until the end of, I guess, the beginning of the new year, till December of the following fiscal year.
Okay, so what does that do to the budget? You know, because it's going to show that we, that money didn't come in.
At this point, we set up receivables.
I'm sorry?
We set up receivables. Since we know that the funds are coming in, we set up receivables. Just when they come in, we'll just make the adjusting entries.
Okay. So it won't have a negative impact?
It slightly does. It just depends the timing of the month. Let's say the revenues come in towards the end of the calendar year, and that's why we kind of have to, like, work with what we have right now.
Okay. It's because, you know, if someone gets this report, and they're going to say they're not paying, because every year is the same thing.
Yes.
So it's misleading. But I guess as long as they're paying, we're okay.
Yes, there's a few entities that do submit during the fiscal year. I think some submit their funding maybe January, others do it mid-year, others do it in December of that fiscal year. It's just that probably I think the bigger ones, they do it until the next fiscal year, which is like December. And at that point, we're starting like a whole new year for us.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, moving on to page three and four, I have the expenditures for general fund. Total year-to-date expenditures for general fund, $15,401,849 with a total surplus of $2,523, excuse me, $2,523,801. I'll move on to page five for the road and bridge. Total revenues collected year-to-date, $6,059,52. Year-to-date expenditures, $5,059,676 with a total surplus of $999,375. I'll move on to page six. Our enterprise funds. Our international bridge, year-to-date revenues, $2,149,053. Total expenditures, $1,861,216 with a total surplus of $287,837. Gas system, year-to-date revenues, $792,494. Year-to-date expenditures, $575,680 with a total surplus of $216,815. Transfer station, we have a year-to-date revenues collected of $981,957, excuse me. Let me repeat that one. $981,957. Year-to-date expenditures, $1,204,93 with a total deficit of $222,136. Our debt service, year-to-date revenues collected, $1,019,650. Total expenditures, $178,505 with a total surplus of $841,144. Moving on to page seven, I have our debt summary for the month ending May 31st. We have outstanding debt for Starr County, $11,756,349. That concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, please. Okay. Under my report, I just want to. We did get the preliminary estimated numbers from the appraisal district, and of course, they are conservative. But the increase in value did not up at all, really. It's pretty flat, so that's not good for us. Because when that happens, you know, then we have no money for the increase in insurance and fuel and whatever. So the budget for next year is not looking very bright. But we'll see until when we get the final numbers from the appraisal district. But right off the top, it is certainly, it's not looking very good. Just to keep you all informed. Moving on, item number eight. This is an action item, and this is to approve the extension of the lease for Alancis Centers. Now, if you all recall at the last meeting, we had decided not to extend the contract on Alancis because the contract that we had was that we're supposed, they don't pay us anything, and we pay for all the maintenance and anything that needs to be fixed, so we decided to cancel that. However, they asked if they could have a 30-day extension so that they could go ahead and move their stuff or whatever it is they need to do. So I don't see that being a problem. Mr. Montalvo, did you look at that?
Yes, sir.
Any problem?
No, no problem.
Motion to approve.
For only one month.
For one month, yeah. I have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item nine is an action item, and this is to approve the selection committee's recommendation to begin negotiations with RRP Consulting Engineers LLC, who is the highest-ranking firm for professional engineering services related to the rehab of the suspension bridge in Roma. I had that on here, but she's not here. But Maricela, you?
Yes, yes. So, good morning, Judge. And I know Reyna.
I had this item on the agenda, because Maricela and yourself and Alex Valera from the city of Roma were on that scoring committee. And we're just here to remind everyone that this project is for the rehab of the suspension bridge in addition to some potential work on the current port of entry for converting the pedestrian lane into an additional lane once that work is being done. And most of this is for engineering services. It's been waiting for about three, four years with that money being allocated as an earmark. Techstat has that money ready. It'll be used as, that grant money will be used as a way to cover these costs for all the engineering and that scope of work that's included in this project. But more importantly, the goal here is for us to try and finally get that money moving and get a firm that has the expertise to move both sides of the border. And I think Maricela can shed some light on the process that was used for the selection, if necessary.
Correct. We had three RRP submitted, Judge. We are part of a committee, which is myself, Reyna Guerra, and city manager Alex Valera out of Roma. We met two weeks ago. We went over each packet that we received, and we did find that our RRP was most qualified in this type of projects that is going to be utilized for our bridge.
So the recommendation from the committee is RRP?
That is correct.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10 is also an action item, and this is to engage, yeah, qualified engineering firm for the purpose of mapping and accessing county roads. If you all recall, we have been discussing this about the county roads that are not dedicated or declared county roads. So, you know, what we need is to bring on an engineering company to go out there and get us a list of all the county roads, and then we can declare them as county roads.
Yes.
And that way, the landowners won't have every time. They can get clear title to their property, that they have the right to ingress and egress. That's what this is for, is that correct?
That is correct.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Your, and this will allow them to map out the county roads as far as the easements. The length and width. Yeah. However, this item is just to go out and request RFPs for, RFPs, yeah, for professional services. Then they have to come in, then we decide, you know, what firm we need to use.
We've had some rule issues with.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been an issue all throughout the county. And we've been talking about this for a while, but we do need to get those roads declared, you know, so that we can maintain them and they cannot close them down or put a gate or whatever. Once they're declared county roads. Any other discussion? If not, all in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 11, also an action item, and this is to approve a resolution for the 2026 area aids, agency on aids for the nutrition program.
That is correct, Your Honor. This application is due June 30th, and this is, this application provides meals to our nutrition centers here in the county.
Motion to approve.
Motion, I have a motion, a second, under discussion. Are the rates going to go up? The commissioners have been telling me that the food cost has been going up.
Inflation's killing us.
Yes, yes. That is correct.
Does it add a little bit?
Yeah, they are going to add a little more, correct.
Okay, excellent. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. If it's all right, we'll skip item 12 until after executive session. 13 has already been taken care of. Item 14, this is an action item, and the reason this is back on is that the last time we tabled it, and when you table, you need to bring it back up. However, Commissioner, you know, it's up to you.
No, yes, sir. Your Honor, I move to approve item 14.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. By the way, Mr. Montalvo, you looked at that contract and reviewed it?
Several of them, we met about that. Collaborated about that. And it was finally reviewed by commissioners and approved by commissioners.
Okay, very good. Item 15 is also an action item, and this is a contract with community leasing partners to lease emergency respond equipment. I guess this is for the vehicle, the fire truck, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 16 is an action item. Oh, okay. This action item, I was approached by Ms. Alanis, the auditor, and apparently there's, I think she sent a letter to all of us or a memo pertaining to this, that, Ms. Alanis, you want to explain what that is?
I'd like to recommend maybe further review of the opening of the bank account. There's some issues, I guess, with the funding, I guess, that's approved, that's going to go to the account. So I don't know if there's time that maybe I can review this and maybe bring it up.
Yes, motion table, second.
Okay, have a motion and second to table. Any further discussion? All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 17 is an action item, and this is to approve a resolution regarding the rental of Alto Monito Park Pavilion. You know, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item 17, Your Honor.
Moved in second, okay, under discussion. We do have a policy on rentals at Londina, don't we?
I have to double check.
I guess.
Can you send it to my office or can you email it to me?
Okay, we'll go ahead and approve it pending that we don't break policy.
Yes.
Okay, if that's okay with the motion and the second. Okay, all in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 18 is to approve a donation.
Move to approve item 18, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Items 19 through 27 are budget amendments.
Is there all in order?
Motion to approve, second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 28 and 29 are budget corrections.
Yes, Judge, those are in order as well.
Motion to approve, second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. It is now 10:30, and pursuant to section 551.087 and 551.074, we will go into executive session to deliberate economic development negotiations, order salaries, and the health and employment benefit pool renewal. We'll be back shortly. Okay. I've got 11:45, and we're back in opposition. Let's go back to item 12, against a possible action on abatement for a management project. And I guess what we're asking is to authorize Ms. Benavides to, Mr. Montalvo, to negotiate an abatement with this company.
Motion to approve.
The Industrial Foundation, for the record, will be the Industrial Foundation.
The Industrial Foundation.
Motion to approve.
Moved in second, discussion. Discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. What we discussed in executive session was the, well, one was the economic development, which was what we just passed, and then the other was the order of salaries.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And then the last item was the health insurance.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve as presented the plan.
The plan, oh.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Motion to approve.
Second. Let's move in second. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.